I still here?
Hi, welcome, Councilor Henry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Councilor Henry, are you on the phone here?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, cool.
We have four council members, just so you know, or five now with Restucci, Councilor Restucci.
It sounds like we have a quorum. Okay, so the time is now six thirty. Today is Monday, June twenty-second. And today's our regular council meeting, number six, held via online conferencing. All city council members and city staff are participating from remote locations. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call on every member to make sure you have had an opportunity to speak, and votes will be taken by roll call by our city clerk. I will, I will now ask our city clerk, Renteria, to start our roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Guerrero.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
Here.
Counselor Farmer. Counselor Henry.
Here.
Counselor Restucci.
Here.
Counselor Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Borisma. Okay, City Manager Casey.
Here.
Finance Director Alba, she didn't respond to the message, Mr. Casey.
All right. Ms. Alba was out ill today, so we'll call her for excused, call her excused for this evening.
Okay, Fire Chief Anderson. I don't hear him, but I do see him on our participants list, Mr. Casey. Let me try to unmute him.
Hey, Anderson, are you muted?
Oh, now do you hear me? Because they had me muted.
Yeah, I'm gonna unmute everybody, and if you can unmute yourselves on your end, okay? I see a lot of people muted. Okay, if you can mute yourselves on your. Okay, so I have Police Chief Escalera.
Yes, here.
Public Works Director Fisher.
Here.
And City Clerk Renteria, I am here.
So we're missing Counselor Farmer and Borisma, unless they were muted when they responded.
Hello?
There he is. Counselor Farmer, is that you?
That's me.
Okay, so we'll hold off on Counselor Borisma, see if he's able to join us a little bit later. And before the meeting is over, I'll try to make a note here to request either excuse or unexcuse absence from council members, since I did not receive an email, unless Jackie or City Manager, you guys did.
I haven't heard anything from any, from Counselor Borisma yet.
And Mr. Mayor, I have not had any contact with Counselor Borisma yet today, or have not heard from him.
Thank you. We'll give him some time and see, maybe he'll join us in a little bit. Okay, up next, we have a proclamation I'll be reading into the record. And it is called Mass Proclamation. So whereas COVID-19 is a highly infectious disease that can result in severe respiratory illness, organ damage, and death, and whereas public officials of the United States of America, Washington State, Yakima County, and the City of Sunnyside have joined in declaring, declaring a public health emergency for COVID-19, and in urgent residence to observe public health guidelines to reduce the transmission of the novel coronavirus that causes COVID-19, and whereas on May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, Governor Jay Inslee signed Proclamation twenty-two-five dot four, requiring that as of June eighth, two thousand and twenty, all employees statewide must wear facial covering on their job, except when working alone. That employer must provide facial coverings to employees, and whereas on June first, two thousand and twenty, the Yakima Health District issued a directive strongly urging all Yakima County residents to wear a face mask, a face covering, in public spaces, and launched a public education campaign urging residents to mask up, to open up, and whereas despite these earnest efforts as of June twentieth, two thousand and twenty, more than six thousand three hundred COVID-19 cases and one hundred and thirteen deaths have been confirmed in Yakima County, and the rate of community transmission of the novel coronavirus that causes COVID-19 has continued to increase. And area hospitals are now reporting that they are at risk of being overwhelmed in their, their capacity to care for Yakima County residents. And whereas critical disruption of important services and damage to life is occurring in local municipalities, including the City of Sunnyside, from the above condition, condition, and whereas on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Jay Inslee announced his intentions to issue a binding proclamation requiring Yakima County residents to wear a facial covering in all public spaces, and further prohibiting commercial establishments from delivering a service or goods to customers who are not wearing a facial covering, in order to immediately, immediately reduce this accelerating rate of coronavirus transmissions in Yakima County. Now therefore, I, Francisco Guerrero, as Mayor of Sunnyside, Washington, do hereby proclaim the month of June, two thousand and twenty, as Mask Up to Open Up Month in the City of Sunnyside. I strongly urge residents of the City of Sunnyside to wear face coverings in public spaces, and further to follow important public health guidelines to reduce the transmission of the novel coronavirus, virus that causes COVID-19, including by limiting nonessential travel, washing hands, and sightseeing services often, and not gathering with others outside your immediate household. I direct the City Manager to post this proclamation in support of the city's efforts to promote public awareness and observe, observance of these public health requirements and guidelines. In testimony whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sunnyside to be affixed done at the City of Sunnyside this twenty-second day of June, the year two thousand and twenty. So hopefully this helps a little bit in spreading the word out that we really want to make sure that we are with the same message with the Governor's Office as far as helping reduce the exposure of our citizens and businesses to COVID-19. Those are who are able to be open at this time. So thank you for, for entertaining that. Up next, we have, yes, Jackie?
Counselor Borisma is here with us now.
Oh, excellent, okay. Thank you for joining us, Counselor Borisma, so no need to ask for an excuse absence later on today. Okay, up next, public comments. Mr. City Manager, is there any public comments that we have received?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we did not receive any public comments in advance of tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Up next, we have our consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes of June eighth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting, our approval of payroll vouchers, and approval of claim vouchers. I will call on each council member to see if there's any questions or comments on these consent agenda items. And we'll start with Counselor Restucci.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Henry.
No questions for me, sir.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
No question for me.
Counselor Hicks. Counselor Hicks is, oh, there he is. Counselor, I see that I'm mute, but going on and off on Counselor Hicks, so he might be having some trouble with that, so Counselor Hicks, any questions or comments on this?
No question.
Thank you.
No question.
Counselor Borisma?
I have no questions, sir.
Counselor Farmer?
None.
Thank you. I don't have any questions either, so what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Who was the second? Was it, I heard two people.
This is Counselor Henry.
Okay, I heard Counselor Henry, so motion by Restucci, second by Counselor Henry to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any debate on this item? Hearing no debate, the city clerk will now start the roll call vote.
Counselor Restucci.
Aye.
Counselor Henry.
Aye.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Borisma.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jackie. Motion passes. Moving on to our next agenda item. Washington State Department of Commerce Interagency Agreement. Consider approving a grant and authorizing the City Manager to enter into an interagency agreement. Mr. City Manager, can you give us a description on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone can hear me all right. Counsel, this is part of the federally passed stimulus and COVID Cares Act funding. This is one of the programs that was initiated to provide some assistance and relief to local governments affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. And what this particular contract does is it sets up the relationship, contractual relationship for us to seek reimbursement through the Washington State Department of Commerce for certain specific eligible expenses that we are incurring as a result of the pandemic. And through a cost allocation formula that was set under the statute and through the state's allocation, the city would be eligible for a maximum of five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, five hundred and twelve thousand one hundred dollars under this grant program. We are required to submit essentially monthly requests for reimbursement as the pandemic goes forward, and this will be in place through October of this year. Under the contract, we can submit for such kinds of expenses as payroll or other actions taken to comply with public health measures, medical expenses, public health expenses, and other related expenses. And so this will help further support our, especially in our general fund expenditures, by allowing us to recoup and recover some of the costs associated with responding to the pandemic. So our staff have been doing a very good job of trying to manage expenses tightly and keep us, keep our spending under our budgeted amounts through the year to date. Being able to access these, these funds for reimbursement of certain expenses will be very helpful to the city. Be happy to answer any questions. Our point person on this will be Finance Director Elizabeth Alba. So we, I know she's not available this evening, but we'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I will now call on each council member to ensure we have an opportunity to ask any questions on this agenda item. And we'll start with Councilmember Borisma.
I don't have any questions, sir. I do think this is a fantastic opportunity for us to take advantage of, and I think we should move ahead on it.
Thank you. Counselor Henry.
No questions.
Counselor Farmer?
I agree with Counselor Borisma.
Okay. Counselor Hicks?
No questions.
Counselor Restucci?
I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No questions.
Thank you. And I just have one question. What kind of reimbursements are we looking to get through this program? Are we talking about anything that has to do related to COVID, even if it might not be fully tied? I'm thinking like police overtime for some, something like this. Is it going to be pretty strict to masks and sanitation, that type of thing, Mr. City Manager?
That's a very good question. Director Alba has been in communication with the grant administrators of the Department of Commerce. And while we do have to be able to show very clear connection to COVID-caused expenses, things that we hadn't otherwise planned or budgeted for and directly related to COVID, we have posed exactly those questions. So for example, we expect to be able to submit for reimbursement of some of the overtime expenses that we incurred after we had the outbreak of COVID-19 at the Law and Justice Center. We expect to be able to seek reimbursement for some of the physical infrastructure changes that we've been making for physical distancing and to provide protective guards, kind of the clear panels, to protect staff, in addition to things like masks and personal protective equipment and so forth. So it is pretty encompassing, as long as we can demonstrate a very clear nexus with the, the expense being incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Okay, so what is the desire of council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the City Manager to execute the interagency agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce for the Coronavirus Relief Fund for local governments.
I second it.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Borisma, second by Deputy Mayor Stremler to approve the grant and authorize City Manager to enter into an interagency agreement. Is there any debate on this item? Hearing no debate, the city clerk will now start the roll call vote, please.
Counselor Borisma?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Restucci?
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. So we'll move on to our next agenda item. Wastewater Treatment Plant Energy Incentive Program Project Contracts. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an exit, and execute contracts with Tolman Electric, Agpro Construction, and Kinter Electric to perform energy efficiency upgrades at our wastewater treatment plant. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of Council, this is the next step in a process that has been before you a couple of times in the past. In two thousand and nineteen, the city entered into an application with Pacific Power to get assistance in identifying energy improvements, energy efficiencies at our wastewater treatment plant that would hopefully generate enough savings to pay for the improvements that would be installed. In January of this year, in two thousand and twenty, we received Pacific Power's incentive offer letter that identified a number of cost-effective energy efficiency projects. And then on March twenty-third of this year, council accepted that incentive offer. So with council's action in March, we proceeded to move forward with solicitations for contractors from our small works roster to bid out the various elements of the project scope identified by Pacific Power. And we are presenting those three contracts tonight for council's consideration. One involves purchase and installation of variable frequency drive motors. That is the element that would be awarded to Tolman Electric as the little bidder of three there. The second is to remove an existing obsolete blower and do some of the work in place. This would be done by the construction company, Agro Construction. They were the lowest of three bidders for that scope of work. And then finally, installing the new blower, connecting it up, the electrical work for that. We received three bids on that as well, and Kinter Electric was the low responsive bidder there. Public Works Director Shane Fisher and wastewater treatment plant supervisor, Raul Yeah, sorry, Sanchez, sorry, I threw black there for a second, have worked very closely with both Pacific Power and then through this process. And either the director or I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and we'll start now with Counselor Hicks. Any questions for this agenda item?
No questions.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No questions.
Counselor Restucci?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Borisma?
I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
And Counselor Henry?
No questions, sir.
Thank you. I, I do have a question, I must imagine, and I'm not sure if you would know the answer for this. I did see there was a three and a half year payback period for this. Do we know what the life expectancy is of these variable frequency drive motors that might obviously give us a picture of how long we're going to have, obviously, the increased savings on electricity?
That's a good question, sir. I'll, I'll invite Director Fisher to respond. He is a little more familiar with the technology.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. These should have at least a ten-year life. Of course, the warranty on those, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look at, at the, at the product spec to see what factory warranties we get with that. Of course, we get the one-year workmanship warranty that automatically comes with any public work with the, the workmanship, workmanship itself. But as far as the, the warranties on each individual element of that, I'd have to go back and check. But generally, it's about ten years.
That sounds reasonable. One other question. Everybody, everyone who submits a bid, they get the same work scope, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I was just, just, I guess more of a comment, because I seen some of these were wildly, very, you know, far apart as far as the bid is concerned. So I was, I was thinking maybe they were getting maybe different information, because some of these are twice as much as some of the lower bidders. So I was just kind of curious on that. Obviously, I know you don't have the answer to that, but obviously, overhead and everything that they do and their work has some effect in that, so. Yeah, I just, I'm glad that we, we see multiple bids instead of just one and then move forward.
Yeah, what I can say is sometimes contractors, if they're really, really busy, they will give you a really, really high number because they know they'll have to pull away some of their crew from other jobs in order to get the work done. So sometimes they'll just throw you some crazy number that doesn't make any sense at all. And that, and that happens from time to time.
And that makes sense. Thank you for that.
You bet.
Okay, so let's see. What is the desire of council on this, on this item?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Deputy Mayor Stremler, second by Councilmember Hicks to approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into, enter into and execute contracts with Tolman Electric, Agpro Construction, and Kinter Electric to perform energy efficiency upgrades at our wastewater treatment plant. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, hearing no debate, the city clerk, the city clerk will now start the roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Restucci?
Yes.
Counselor Borisma?
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have items from council members. First up is council request status report, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Member, Members of Council, at this time, in part because of COVID-19 pandemic and availability of resources and services, I'm not aware that we have any changes from the June eighth updates. I would invite any of the department heads, if you have new information, to feel free to jump in at this point, but I'm, I'm not aware of anything new.
Okay, it sounds like we are on a holding pattern on this one for a little while, so we'll move on to our next agenda. Is there anything that council members want to add to our request status report?
Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Restucci.
Yes, Councilmember.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to add, regarding the small cell 5G issues, we're now running into some net, national or international patent issues with Ericsson and Huawei, which is going to affect 5G deployment across the country. So I'm keeping an eye on it, but we're still not anywhere near deployment of 5G, at least not right now.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wants to do an update or add anything or remove anything? Please let us know, and then we'll get it on here if we feel there needs to follow up. Our next agenda item is going to be other reports, announcements, and or questions by council. And council members will start with Counselor Farmer. Is there any reports, announcements, and or questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got, I've got a, an issue that's, I was made aware of this afternoon. We have talked about the camping in city-owned parking lots. I received some complaints from neighbors regarding some alleged activities that should not be going on there, and it probably are. I was just wondering what, what we can do to, to help these, these neighbors out. They're, they're having to live with some awful stuff. A really bad situation.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any information on this?
I don't know of the most recent complaint, but if there are new concerns, we'd be happy to take a look into that. I know that code enforcement has been attempting with advice and involvement from our legal counsel to take steps to try to get a couple of the non-ha, non-inhabited vehicles removed from a city-owned parking lot. But if there's some new information, we'd be happy to send that either to code enforcement, or if the more appropriate, if it may be rising to the level of police enforcement, we'd be happy to try to take a look and see what steps we can take there. So if there's details or contact information from the neighbors that can give us the specifics of what they've observed, we'll, we'll follow right up.
Mr. City Manager, I will, I will call you and talk to you tomorrow regarding complaints and the people complaining. I, I think there's some serious things happening there, and, and I, I just, I just think the city needs to at least take a look at it and confirm or not confirm what's happening.
Absolutely. Now, we'll check right into it. Appreciate the heads up.
Counsel Farmer, anything further?
Not at this time.
Okay. We'll move on to the next, Councilmember Hicks.
No items at this time.
Okay, Counselor Restucci?
Mr. Mayor, only one item. On Friday, I transmitted the signed letter to the Governor's Office on behalf of the elected officials in Yakima County per the general membership meeting that happened last Thursday.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor, let me see, where am I at? Counselor Henry?
Nope, nothing, nothing from.
Nope, nothing from me today.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Stremler?
I have, I have two things. One, I want to know if the city is planning it, not that they anticipated or even remotely think it could happen. But if it does happen, then it's too late to think about it. A lot of places, they are tearing down statues, defacing them, tearing them down. And I see no police interference whatsoever. What is the city's policy if we have a group come into town and decide to either deface, tear down the Veterans Plaza or monuments like Ben's knives, or take a flag down, a flagpole and burn it? What does the city have any response in line in case something like this does happen? In fact, I see it happening in so many places. I don't think locals would do it, but if some people come to town to do it, I would hate to see us caught off guard.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Council Stremler. In brief, vandalism is something that we would take very seriously. And I'll certainly invite Chief Escalera to chime in on this. But if a group or individuals attempted to vandalize certainly the Jerry Taylor Veterans Plaza or any of the public artwork and statues that have been put up around town, we would attempt to stop that from happening. I don't know, Chief, if you want to add a few words on that?
Really, just to build on that, it's just, you know, currently with the restrictions that we have, proactive enforcement has slowed down, which gives us a little bit more time to be prowling around looking for things of that nature during our patrol activities. However, due to the short staff that we do have, the minimal numbers that we have organization-wide, we are still, you know, we're running three people per shift. That includes the sergeant. So coverage is less, no doubt about that. And activity has been picking up in the sense of calls for service. So it does pull us from just routine patrol activity at the same time. So there is a balance, but we do watch those things as much as we possibly can. And hopefully, it doesn't come to our city in that respect.
If it does, I assume you would call for help from other cities or the sheriff's department or state patrol or somebody, is that correct? Or you're just going to try to handle yourself?
Yeah, you just have to handle, if it's a, if it's a, if it's something that's already happened and there are no people there, there are no suspects or tangible suspects there, then no, we wouldn't call for outside assistance. But if it's a crowd that's there, absolutely, you know, we would certainly be calling for outside assistance.
Yeah, I was not talking about discovering it happened. I was talking about if somebody came to town and everybody was watching it happen. That, I mean, it would be in-progress type deal is what I was talking about.
Yeah, in progress, if, depending on the size of the crowd, it would definitely, because of the short numbers that we have, it would necessitate some either outside interference or outside assistance if we have it available to us. If not, then calling people out. So, but yeah, that's definitely a concern.
Anything further, Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Well, this is not a council item, just kind of a general item for the council. If anybody knows they lost a pet turtle, one showed up at our back door this evening.
Well, luckily, Julia's on the call, so she may know someone out there. All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Stremler.
It's the only pet that I can catch.
Up next, we have Councilmember Brozna.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did receive a phone call from a citizen this morning who made note of the vast number of people who have been walking up along Grandview Avenue and the side streets off of Grandview Avenue over the course of this pandemic and also made note of the fact that the city has been working quite a bit at the Grandview Reservoir and so has decided to have a porta potty placed right near the Grandview Reservoir. And that is for the use of anybody coming by. Apparently, he's had conversations with people saying that, you know, they're not quite able to make it home in time or they struggle. And so he's had that place there for the use of walkers and city staff. And he just wanted council to know that and have that out there for everybody to know.
That's great. Thank you. And it looks like we have everyone, so I'll be next. I've got a couple of items. One is last Tuesday, on, what was it, was that? On the 16th, the night prior to the 16th, we got an email inviting us to meet with the governor the next day and the evening and afternoon. And we kind of put it together pretty quickly. I requested to have our city manager join on that meeting. And we met at the community college in Yakima. And there was four mayors from other cities, a county commissioner, the governor, and I forget his name, but he was the head of the health department, I believe, for the state. And another young lady, another lady that was there for organizing, I believe, the COVID-19 response. And the mayor, the mayor's basically brought up a few issues that are, we are facing. Obviously, wanting to open up businesses is a big one. We know that they are struggling by not being able to serve residents. Also, the big one, the Yakima, had also, they had a pretty big campaign of masking up to open up. The county commissioner, their big Vicki Baker, said that they were going to spend some money running this campaign. And the governor asked to get in touch with their media campaign agency to try to help or provide additional funding, more than likely to help make that campaign a little bit bigger. So with that, we heard from the governor as he's concerned. And obviously, later on that day, he also met with the media and he met with small businesses. And quite a few felt that we were being, in a sense, I think the word was, chastised. And it did feel that way afterwards. While we were there, it didn't seem that way. It was more of a, he was listening to our concerns. But I guess he felt that he needed to maybe, you know, put us in our place, I guess, a little bit. And then saying that we were not doing enough in our county to reduce the exposure of an increase in COVID-19. So that was, I guess, good in a sense that he hurt our concerns and hopefully he'll, you know, heed some of our, you know, requests. But at the end of the day, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. These numbers are not very satisfactory for Yakima County. So I do believe that we got to do something about it. And it sounds like his proclamation coming out sometime soon is going to put some more pressure on all of our residents to try to minimize the spread of this virus. So that was a kind of short notice, you know, last-minute type of meeting. And myself and the city manager were able to attend. And the city manager, if anything you want to add to that, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I appreciate your summary. It was, it was, as you say, very short notice. I was impressed by the way in which the county leaders, even with limited time to prepare, were remarkably unified in their messaging and in bringing distinct aspects of the challenges that each city is facing and the county to the governor's attention. It did seem that they heard perhaps, they certainly heard the general message about the concerns about the economic impacts. I don't, I got the sense that the sense, that the the fact that the state could perhaps be doing more to help amplify some of the strong efforts by particularly county government in partnership with organizations like the Yakima Chamber and the County Development Association to deliver assistance and technical support to our business community in a more streamlined, more effective way. Some of these programs are cumbersome and challenging for businesses to take part in. And I got the sense that that was sort of new feedback to them. So hopefully, that sticks and makes its way back to Olympia. And appreciated the opportunity, as you said, to at least be given a chance to be heard in that setting.
Thank you. Another meeting that I was able to attend was the home board meeting where they were asking for funding to apply for grants on those two projects that we talked about here in Sunnyside that are currently on the tax rolls and are being potentially purchased by Spokane Ventures, which is a nonprofit who would then apply to get them off our tax rolls. And I did voice the concern the council had regarding them coming off. So I did vote against that funding. Unfortunately, the rest of the group felt that it was a worthy venture, worthy cause, and they voted for it. So at this point, they were able to get some grant funding in the tune of about $250,000 for each one of those projects, along with the project that is out there by going towards AMPM Best Western, the Yakima County, Yakima, no, Diasis Housing Unit that is planned for that area. So one brand-new development and two remodeled units that they're looking at purchasing. So I want to report that to council as well. And the last one, I did attend the WABC meeting with Councilmember Restucci. And it was a well-run meeting and everybody, everyone got a chance to submit suggestions to the letter. And we felt the letter was well-written and encompassed everyone's, you know, input in there. And Deputy Mayor, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brozna wasn't able to make it. And, but he, it sounds like he talked it over with our other Councilmember Restucci. And they were in agreement that it was a good letter, and I voted in favor of it. Anything else to add, Council Restucci, to that?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your support. I hope that the letter reached the governor's office in a good way and that this somehow furthers our ability to open our county as soon as possible.
Yes, thank you for all your work you do there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for attending that meeting on my behalf. As you know, I was tangled up in traffic that was a result of that sinkhole on Interstate 82 in Zilla and was unable to get online and out of that mess at the same time. So thank you very much for going on my behalf.
No problem. And obviously, that's the reason we have alternates. And by all means, if one of us is unable to attend a meeting, please notify your alternate. That way, we are represented in these meetings and have our voice heard. So no problem. That's what we're here for. So thank you for being our primary there. Okay, so we have everyone, everyone got an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone needing to, a second time to speak on any reports, announcements, or questions by council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is upcoming council meetings. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the screen, for those of you that are following along online, the clerk has placed the next couple of meeting agenda topics. July 6th, we have a workshop. We are still, given the extensions that the governor has issued on meeting processes as well as the fact that we'll still be in phase one of, or it's expected that we're likely to still be in phase one in three weeks. We're still trying to figure out some of the logistics about how we hold the July 6th workshop. We believe at that point that the suspension of the OPMA will have lapsed. And so at least some council members ought to be able to attend in person. However, we're also still subject to the requirement that no gatherings of people outside their immediate household take place. We're trying to get clarification through the Clerks Association and MRSC on how do, because we're one of the last counties in that situation. We're trying to get clarification on how we support you in conducting that successfully. In the meantime, what we have on the planned agenda, Council Farmer mentioned earlier, the research that had been done and the conversation around the parking and vehicle ordinances. The city's attorneys are prepped for that and prepared to provide a briefing on that to support your discussion. We are also anticipating providing a mid-year budget update as to where our revenues and expenditures are coming in so far. We might not have June quite closed out, but we'll be pretty close. Next is, each year, we're required to bring you the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. The projects on the plan have not changed much in '18 or '19 or currently planned for '20. There have been some minor adjustments based on some funding decisions and timelines set by State Department of Transportation. And so HLA, our contracted engineering and construction management firm, as well as Director Fisher from Public Works will be, have been working on an updated PIP for your review. And then we have a request for a proclamation from Boy Scouts of America. And we have that tentatively set for that. That could either, actually, now that I'm thinking about it, that might be better fit at the July 13th meeting. But certainly, that's the mayor's discretion. For July 13th, once you've had your discussion on the Transportation Improvement Plan, state law requires that we hold a public hearing. There are mechanisms for holding public hearings even within the restrictions under the pandemic orders. It's just been a little differently, and we have people sign up virtually and kind of like what we're doing with this evening's meeting if we can't yet hold a large gathering. And then following the public hearing would be the opportunity for council to take its final action on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. We also anticipate being ready to present our second quarter budget amendment. And Finance Director Alba will be leading that effort. We're kind of keeping the future agendas. We've kind of mapped them out loosely, that you have the dates in front of you for the rest of the year. But we haven't plugged in too much yet because we've got, as you see, a kind of a working list of a number of different potential topics. We have, for example, coming up in August will be the the vote on, the public vote on the Transportation Benefit District Proposition 1. This was the proposed sales tax increase that the council agreed to put on the ballot earlier this year. There's a fact sheet that has been prepared by city attorneys and staff to go along with that. But we have that out there. By the end of October, we need to determine then if we're going to enter into the Transportation Improvement Board's contract agreement to fund the Midville Road project. Again, that's out there, but several months away. We have deferred the George Polis recognition, the wrestling coach. Hopefully, maybe when school resumes in the fall, which right now, they're talking somewhat cautiously, optimistically about being able to have in-person, on-campus instruction again. We might be able to time that with when school comes back. We have plans to kick off the '21 budget process probably in early August, either perhaps at the evening meeting or we could try to set something, you know, council's preference in the past has been to do kind of a Saturday meeting where we can devote, you know, up to six hours perhaps to deep dive into budget process and information. So starting to work on putting that together. And then there are a number of items that staff have identified related to some adjustments or updates to some of the city ordinances. We'll be working on getting those ready for you this fall. And we have one collective bargaining agreement to negotiate this year. That's with Public Works, with the frontline staff there. And so we're just getting ready to kick off that process. And that'll also be probably coming back to council towards the end of the year. And, oh, last, we have a proposal that we're starting to research. Many cities and counties in the state contract with the MRSC, which maintains a very large, very robust small works roster. There's a fee associated with this. However, there's also costs associated with the city maintaining its own rosters. We have to advertise, we have to administer that. It may be cost-effective for us to take advantage of the MRSC rosters. We have a very small roster. There are not a large list of businesses that We have a very small roster, there are not a large list of businesses that have chosen to sign up with the city's roster, whereas MRSC's roster is in the thousands of businesses and very robust, so we're starting to research and have that dialogue, potentially bring back that idea to you later this year, and, but don't yet have a date for those. That's some of what's out on the outlook.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, so that, any agenda items that council members want to add, please let City Manager, Jackie, or myself know, and we'll try to get them on the agenda and get those discussed. Next, we have items from city manager and department heads.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I was going to cover two topics primarily, one, I want to provide more of an update around the most current information on the COVID-19 pandemic, and then secondly, to share information about the recent Enterprise Challenge competition that was conducted by the Yakima County Development Association. For COVID-19, a short time ago this evening, county officials, county officials updated their, the website, the county is now reporting 6,596 COVID-19 cases and 127 deaths. This is an increase of 1,667 cases and 31 deaths just since your last council meeting two weeks ago. Right now, we have 57 county residents hospitalized, which is, I believe, one of the highest counts we've had to date. In addition to the devastating losses of life and illness, we are feeling the impacts of the pandemic in many other ways. As was noted earlier this evening, our business community is continuing to struggle. We know, for example, that too, the events have been getting canceled, high school graduations and Memorial Day celebrations certainly look very different. Sunnyside Lions Club has canceled their 4th of July fireworks display, as have the cities of Yakima and the Tri-Cities, and both the Central Washington State Fair and the 110th Pendleton Roundup in September have just been canceled. And as we know, on Saturday, the governor announced he will soon require Yakima County residents to wear face coverings in public. We do not yet have any of the details on the order or how it will be enforced. Follow-up to some of the comments shared earlier about kind of how his remarks had been received mid-week, where folks kind of felt a little chastised, in his remarks on Saturday during this announcement, he did make a point of praising the efforts of local officials and residents, and he committed the state to further medical and logistical and economic assistance to the county. County reports they have just distributed in the last couple of weeks, more than 300,000 disposable masks, and we're expecting to get a couple hundred thousand more usable cloth masks for low-income residents soon. And I want to do a shout-out to city staff and particularly Elizabeth Alba, who unfortunately is, is not feeling well this evening, but she and others coordinated to deliver nearly 17,000 disposable masks that we received late last week to Sunnyside businesses and residents in just a few days. I'd like to make a quick point about labels and data, since there's a lot of data getting thrown around. And I've seen Sunnyside or heard Sunnyside sometimes being called a COVID-19 hotspot. Today's Seattle Times actually labeled us, quote, "one of the hottest of counties hotspots." And this reputation seems to come mainly from the number of cases here and some maps that have colored us in bright purple. But I've also reviewed the county's data, and I think it's important to note that our case rate is still below 5% of our population. There are nearly a dozen communities here in the valley that have case rates ranging from 6% all the way up to 16% of their residents. Also, our cases have been rising at a slightly slower rate than in many other valley cities. And I don't report on this to minimize the severity of our situation or to label others. My concern instead is that being labeled a hotspot can sometimes spark fear or even hopelessness, hopelessness among residents. If we're a hotspot, what's the point? We're already overwhelmed, and I really want to urge Sunnyside residents to stay strong in this. The data are actually showing that we are having some success in keeping COVID-19 from really exploding in Sunnyside, and I'm confident that working together, we can drive our rates down even further. The city council and city staff have taken many steps already to help educate the public, to reduce infection rates, and to support our local businesses. We know there's still more work to do at the city, and we welcome the suggestions that residents have shared with us, and some of those we've been able to act on ourselves, and others, we've been able to refer to our partners at the county or in the economic development community for action, so please keep them coming. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the Enterprise Challenge. I had the distinct pleasure of serving as a judge for this year's Enterprise Challenge conducted by the Yakima County Development Association and the Kitata County Chamber of Commerce. This is an annual competition for new and emerging companies in the region. This year's competition started with 23 businesses who worked on developing their business plans and actually took part in a trade show up in Kitata County Fairgrounds. Six businesses made it to the final round of judging, which we had to delay a couple of months because we had to restructure the process after the COVID-19 pandemic forced us to curb our in-person judging process. But last week, we announced the winners, and the $10,000 grand prize was awarded to Junk Bros', which is owned by Jacob and Jeremy Castillo, and they have ties here to Sunnyside, and they pick up a wide range of unwated items and then turn them around through donation, recycling, and disposal options, and they put together a great business plan and a really strong process for growing their business over time. Second prize, and they'll be using the prize winnings for specific investments in that business, which was one of the things that we looked for in judging, is how will the prize money enable that business to grow in a very strategic way? Second prize of $5,000 went to Little Hopper, a small bus tour company that transports visitors to our valley's craft breweries. And third prize of $2,500 went to Elite Tours, a luxury motor coach company that transports visitors to our wineries. And all of these businesses had to really adapt their strategies on the fly to the new pandemic realities, and certainly we wish them continued success, and it was, it was a real pleasure to be able to learn about these businesses and see what they're contributing to our community. And with that, that's my report for tonight, and we'll start turning it over to the department heads. Want to start with, start with maybe Director, probably Works Director Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Yeah, I just have one quick update on our East Enesim project. We have a little bit of a delay. Contractor was supposed to be in the first week of July, actually July 6th, to mow in as they're noticed proceed. Looks like it's going to be July 13th, it'll be just one week delayed before they can make it here, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Chief Escalera?
Nothing for me, just a quick update for the COVID issues. We have been receiving some calls from the store, or some of the stores asking, not necessarily asking, but just kind of wondering how come we're not enforcing people not, you know, coming into their businesses and they're not wearing masks and things like this, and then we're also getting the same from the, from the, the patron, patron coming in saying that, hey, you know, this person is serving me here or helping me out with this service, but he's not masked, and why is this not being enforced? So a little of both, but the education is, is good, the guys are handling it well, so hopefully that tends to slow down a little bit. That's all I have.
Thank you. Keith Anderson?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Clerk Renteria?
I don't have any. The only, I guess the only update is the census is still at 51.3% response rate from Sunnyside, so just sharing that, and I'll be sharing that on Facebook, and I'll continue to share more COVID information to the public, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so it sounds like that's all we have tonight, so anything, anything else from council members before we adjourn tonight? Just a reminder, for those signed up for the AWC conference, I believe it's 24th, 25th, and 26th virtually, so I know I'm not sure if Jackie or the city manager signed me up for a couple of those, thank you for doing that, and I'll be attending the business meeting as well, so looking forward to seeing you guys virtually there.
Sounds good, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, there being no further business to come before council, I'm without objection. I adjourned this meeting at 7:28 PM.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.